Good evening. It is May 4th, 2021. May the Fourth be with you. It's 7:00 PM. And we are going to start our socially-distanced regular City Commission meeting. It's our first regular City Commission meeting of the month, and we are in Commission chambers. Thank you all for being here. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight by our Deputy City Engineer, Alex Schuman, and our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker, who served as our greeters tonight. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. Our Recording Secretary is Cassidy Ritz. Our City Attorney is Randy Hayes. From Zone 1, Commissioner Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
From Zone 2, Commissioner Troy Kent.
Hey, everybody.
Our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone 4. And down in front, we have Assistant City Clerk Wendy Hauntz, City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please make sure that your cellphones are silenced, put on silent, and we will rise for the invocation given by Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, and bless our time this evening, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the fun part of the meeting, and we get to present proclamations to special people, and we have a special one here tonight. Jim Purdy was the elected public defender from the 7th Judicial Circuit here in Florida. And I think the thing to point out about the 7th Judicial Circuit is it's a huge circuit. It contains Volusia, Flagler, Putnam, and St. John's. That used to be the old congressional district of Bill Chapel 30-some years ago, yep, way back. But it's a huge circuit. Mr. Purdy, for 16 years, managed over 100 attorneys and staff and ran a very fiscally responsible office that protected the residents of the entire circuit. And so it's my honor tonight to present him with a proclamation honoring his service and his retirement. And I'm going to have him hold it here while I read it. Whereas James S. Purdy began his service as the elected public defender of the 7th Judicial Circuit of Florida in January 2005, Jim served as both an Assistant Attorney General and an Assistant State Attorney in the 7th and 12th Judicial Circuits of Florida, and spent seven years in private practice. And whereas Jim lived on Orchard Lane for a short time, growing up, and then moved back to Ormond Beach with his family after spending some time in Pensacola, we believe strongly here in the city of Ormond Beach that it was those years in Ormond that developed the sharp legal mind that allowed him to provide the great public service later on in life. He graduated from the Seabreeze High School, went to work as a busboy at Julian's Dining Room and Lounge on Atlantic Avenue. And whereas Jim met his beautiful wife Marilyn, who's here with us this evening, who was a judge's secretary in an elevator while working for the 12th Judicial Circuit, they were married in 1981 and have a son, Matthew. For Jim's 60th birthday, he and Matthew spent 10 days in northern Spain, walking the Camino de Santiago together. The experience with his son was one of the most memorable and special moments of Jim's life. And whereas Jim graduated cumulatum with a Bachelor of Arts degree in history from the University of Florida in 1975, and received his Juris Doctor degree from Nova University Center for the Study of Law in 1978. And whereas public defenders represent clients who cannot afford their own criminal defense attorneys, and the 7th Judicial Circuit includes Volusia, Flagler, St. John's, and Putnam Counties, Jim oversaw 57 trial attorneys in the felony misdemeanor and juvenile divisions who handled 33,000 cases a year. There were also 22 appellate attorneys under Jim's direction. His policy on approaching each case was to represent the individual as if that person were their own child. Jim was known as a loyal boss and highly dedicated to getting the job done. Also, whereas Jim has been involved in the community by serving as Chairman of the Volusia County Republican Party and as District Chairman of the Boy Scouts of America for the Kings Road and Three Rivers districts, he has served on the Florida Medical Examiners Commission since his appointment in 2008, and now volunteers for the National Park Service at the historic Castillo de San Marcos in St. Augustine. They left out the part about the Volucionaries. How did they let that happen, Commissioner Selby? All right. Whereas Jim retired on December 31st, 2020, to enjoy family, traveling, and dedicating more time to his passion for history, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim today, May 4th, 2021, as a day to recognize James S. Purdy in the city of Ormond Beach, and encourage all residents to join me in wishing Jim the best in his well-deserved retirement and in thanking him for his many years of service to the city. Congratulations. And now's the part where I say, but wait, there's more. As a young resident of Ormond Beach, I thought it particularly appropriate to give you the key to the city along with your proclamation, so congratulations.
I only have one question. Why, where are the Donny's Donuts?
Across the street.
It's been a pleasure. I've had a lot of fun memories growing up here in Ormond Beach, working for Julian Lopez when I was 16-years-old, bussing tables, and then at the Publix out in Bel Air Plaza as a bag boy for a couple of years, and...
As a garbage man?
Oh, and a garbage man at Daytona Beach shores, picking up trash on the beach, too, a couple of summers. So I had a lot of different jobs in the area, and I've always loved this community. My parents brought us here back in 1966, I believe, and then we moved just for one year to Pensacola and then moved back, and just loved going to Seabreeze and loved the people of Ormond Beach, and I really appreciate this honor, and I'll hang this up in my study with great pleasure.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Thank you. And also, just real quick, a lot of friends, family, former coworkers, and staff from the Public Defender's Office came out to support Mr. Purdy tonight, along with the new elected public defender for the 7th Judicial Circuit, Mr. Matt Metz.
Yay!
I told Mr. Metz, we always, whenever we have elected officials in the chambers, we make it a point to point them out, and thank you for visiting, so thank you very much for being here. Next is National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Since that time, National Police Week has been a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community, including the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, which produces the annual candlelight vigil, the Fraternal Order of Police and Fraternal Order of Police Auxiliary, which organizes the Peace Officers Memorial Day service at the U.S. Capitol, and Concerns of Police Survivors, which holds the National Police Survivors Conference. And whereas the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's focus for 2021 is officer safety and wellness, their goal is to encourage law enforcement through daily morning workouts, a suicide prevention program, a special destination zero cardiac wellness screening, and an officer safety and wellness product showcase throughout the week. And whereas the Police Unity Tour, started in 1997 by Police Officer Patrick Montour from New Jersey, is a multi-day bicycle ride starting from a set location and ending at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., Officer Montour's idea was to raise money and public awareness about law enforcement officers who have died in the line of duty and ensure their sacrifice is never forgotten. What started as 18 riders from New Jersey in its inception has grown into 2,600 members nationwide who make the trip annually. And whereas the City of Ormond Beach Police Department will participate once more in the Police Unity Tour, making it their fifth year, in past years, Ormond Beach members would start in Virginia and ride 250 miles in three days. This year, Ormond Beach will start in Tallahassee, Florida, and ride over 300 miles in four days; they will end at the American Police Hall of Fame and Museum in Tidesville. All funds raised from the Police Unity Tour will be donated to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, and whereas it's important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our police force recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 9th through 15th, 2021, as National Police Week in the city of Ormond Beach, and encourage all residents to join me in honoring the thousands of men and women of local, state, federal, and tribal law enforcement agencies who made the supreme sacrifice with their lives to protect the freedom of others while safeguarding and preserving the rights and freedoms guaranteed by the Constitution of this great nation. Thank you and congratulations. All right. Audience remarks. We will start tonight with Joel Hernandez. The podium over here, sir. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I just have a short question. It's in reference to the Aviation Advisory Board. This is a meeting that was traditionally a quarterly meeting, and just recently it's been changed to an "as-needed" meeting. The purpose of it is to gather information in reference to the development and the operations of the airport and present it to this commission to make the decisions. Those are the "ad-needed" changes. Those are the "ad-needed" decisions that need to be made, not in "ad-needed" meetings. These things should continue quarterly. I ask you to reconsider, and I actually would like to know why. Why the change?
Thank you. And our City Manager can give you her card, either her or her designee will be happy to get with you and answer that for you.
Okay.
Next is Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard. Hey, Manatee County, Piney Point was in the news when Governor DeSantis was talking about a potential wall of water flooding from the gypsum stack, which is part of the phosphate industry associated with fluoride. That wasn't a high-fluoride-content stack, so it wouldn't have been as bad, but it would have knocked down houses if they had totally collapsed. Manatee, well, actually, Mulberry had had, a few years ago, instead of the wall collapsing on the stack, they had a big sinkhole, and you lose millions of gallons of very contaminated water down into the aquifer. And they just had it happen 20 years prior to that. So it is an issue in Florida. You know, but fluoride is something that I've talked about a lot, and the lawsuit met again with Judge Chen in San Francisco, 9th District, and the EPA still hasn't come up with any safety data showing what levels fluoride would be neurotoxic to infants and fetuses. But they were given another opportunity, and they'll be meeting again in several months. As far as, you know, this whole thing with neurotoxic and IQ loss, at the last meeting, the EPA had actually given one study as proof of safety, and unfortunately, it was proof of harm. It was a rat study that they referred to, done by Phyllis Mullenex at Harvard in '99, of which, when she published it, she was immediately fired, and she's never been allowed to work again. And they also took sledgehammers and broke all of her equipment up, so the study could not be duplicated again. Strange the way they are at, well, it was Forsyth Institute at Harvard. It wasn't Harvard itself, but strange they are with unfavorable data. And also, I just read another study that was from a different country, actually talking about bone damage. They had studies in the U.S. showing that fluoride, especially in higher levels, used to be used to make stronger bones, but then they found out it made them brittle and they snapped like chalk, unfortunately.
Thank you, Jim. And next is Connie Colby.
Good evening. My name is Connie Colby. I live at 108 Roble Lane in Ormond Beach. Tonight, I'd just like to talk about the Riverbend Golf Club, Golf Course. The Riverbend Municipal Golf Course is a valuable asset to the city of Ormond Beach. Online reviews by users rate it as one of the best-laid-out courses around. There are two issues that do need some work, the cart path and a bridge. It is always busy with residents, visitors, businesspeople, and it offers opportunities for children to learn the game. Groups are now scrambling for places to take their business. Golf is a lifelong sport. It's safer than most sports and offers year-round opportunities to play in Ormond Beach. The course is located at the airport, making it readily available for people who are arriving and departing. Ormond Beach is always seeking new businesses, and much business dealings take place on the golf course. We have heard that golf is a non-compatible use of the airport property. According to the FAA, it is compatible. Unfortunately, at this time, the county is disputing the tax-exempt status of this municipal golf course, and the city has ongoing legal issues right now awaiting a decision. The issue of tax exemption for the golf course was settled in 1997. Apparently, the county appraiser feels that he can overrule this decision. I would urge the commission to refrain from discarding Riverbend prior to a court decision. At this time, maybe keep the grass mowed to prevent any further deterioration. Find someone who can give a valid assessment as to the cost of putting the course in good shape. We've lost Timoca Oaks, one of the courses at Pelican Bay, and Indigo Lakes. Some of the courses around are high-priced. Others are crowded due to the loss of the other courses. We still have a chance to save ours. It seems like this is discrimination against Ormond Beach because Daytona Beach is considered tax-exempt, and they're basically the same as we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. The minutes from the April 20th, 2021 City Commission meeting have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's websites. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Show those passing unanimously. And the consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
A second to motion.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time if any member of the commission wished to comment on any of the consent agenda items. If not, we will move on to public hearings. I will open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read...
Mayor, I'm sorry. Josh, before you leave, I just wanted to say that I thought appointing Josh Pringle to the Budget Advisory Board is a very good move. Josh, you've served the community for years, doing selfless work, and I think you're going to be a great addition to that Budget Advisory Board, so thank you for agreeing to do that. Appreciate it.
Great catch. And thank you for being here, Josh. Anyone else? All right. I'll open the public hearings, ask the clerk to read 8A.
Ordinance 2021-16. An ordinance amending Paragraph C, official zoning map of Section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts, and official zoning map of Chapter 2, districts and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 2.70 acres located at 1480 North US Highway 1, from B7, Highway Tourist Commercial, to PBD, Planned Business Development, authorizing revision of the official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-16, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. I do not have any cards. Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance Number 2021-17. An ordinance approving a planned business development to be known as Ormond Ace Hardware, to be located at 1480 North US Highway 1, authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order, therefore, authorizing the construction of a two-story retail-use building and garden center, authorizing outdoor activity use, reduction of setbacks, and associated site improvements, establishing conditions and expirations of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-17, read by title only.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings, move to 9A.
Resolution Number 2021-83. A resolution accepting a proposal from AM Weigel Construction, Inc., to provide construction management services regarding the demolition of a structure at 56 North Beach Street, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2021-83, read by title only.
Thank you, and I have several cards. We will start with Dr. Charles Stein.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Charles Stein. I have been a resident, lifelong resident of Florida, and in Ormond Beach since 1985. I've been practicing medicine here in town since that time. About a week ago, in my capacity as president-elect and also past president of Congregation Bene Torah, it was brought to my attention that this beautiful church was due, at the address noted, was due for demolition. And the day bef, the next day, I met with the mayor and other folks at the church, and we walked through the church to determine the feasibility of restoration. That can't be done in a quick walkthrough. And it's a beautiful facility. Apparently, from what I've researched, it's on the site of the oldest and first church in Ormond Beach. The building is beautiful. It's got these huge, beautiful archways, but it does have some damage. What I would like to ask is that the commission, the City Commission, delay the demolition by a month, allowing access to those that have a desire to investigate the feasibility of restoration, so we could try to save it. I don't know the urgency of trying to rush a demolition, so I would ask that you delay it initially a month, allowing investigation. If that investigation proved to be, show feasibility for restoration, then we would come back to the commission and ask for an additional delay and ability to negotiate. So that's what I would ask you to do.
Thank you, doctor. Next is Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Travis Sargent, 406 North Beach. Today's a sad day for Ormond Beach, the loss of its first and oldest church. In 2012, the Ormond Union Church held a renaming of the church to Ormond Riverside Church under the new leadership. Now, in 2021, all the church property has been sold, and we're left with a decision on what to do with the property. The residents in this area bought their homes, knowing that this property was a church, has low traffic in the area. We do not need to construct on this property anything that would produce high traffic. It is my opinion the building located at 56 North Beach Street should be demolished. No tax money should be used to fix it, as it's a dilapidated building. Per the property inspection on March 5th, 2018, the immediate repairs are as follows, and this was the inspection before the purchase of the building. HVAC, 9,640. Roofing, 14,925. Electrical, 2,120. Windows and doors, 25,000. Interior and exterior cleaning, 25,000. Classroom renovation, 25,000. TNM and EPDM area roofs, re-roofs, 99,100. That is a total of $200,785. These are the figures that were given in 2018. Given the current condition, I'm sure these figures would be at least 25% more. Please make the right decision and tear down this structure. As I have mentioned in the past, it would be nice if we could move the McDonald House there and preserve some history in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And Julia Trillo.
Good evening. Julia Trillo, Ormond Beach, Main Street. I am here again to ask you not to be hasty. I am here again to ask you not to be hasty. You've owned the property at 56 North Beach Street for two and a half some years. During that time, this commission has not spent much time or effort on imagining what the property could become. Yes, I know there was a workshop and that you talked through a set of unappealing plans from a consultant. I fear that experience soured you on the church and perhaps clouded your imaginations about what else could happen. There are several folks here this evening who see potential at 56 North Beach Street, and I see potential for a win-win for you. Let us take a few weeks, as Dr. Stein suggested, to discuss solutions. Perhaps that means selling to a new owner. Perhaps it means partitioning the property, leaving the city with the riverfront portion to add to its park system, and selling the remaining building and parcel to a willing buyer who would take over the process of restoration and free the city of that burden. Or a coalition of groups might be found to restore the building, allowing the city to keep its valuable land for the next 50 to 100 years without expending money for the structure. City already owns several properties that it manages, that are managed by nonprofit groups. It would not be a new idea. These are just a few of possible scenarios. But there are no offers that can be made, no ideas discussed, if the building is no longer there. Let these interested parties do their due diligence, gather their funding, make an offer. I ask again, what's the haste? Please consider that when you vote tonight.
Thank you. And I see Nancy Cortez, but I don't see her here still. Okay. Bill Partington.
I live at 4 Pine Valley Circle. Earlier today, I wrote a letter. Unfortunately, I tried to deliver that by electronic process and was unable to successfully do that to everyone. But everyone, when they got to the meeting tonight, did receive a copy, and I hope you've had a chance to at least glance over it. It's two pages, and I'm afraid it's too long for me to read in its entirety, so I will summarize a couple of the paragraphs. Goes over the history of the property and my knowledge about when it was built and what the condition of the building is. The purpose in reciting my observation of the building conditions is to indicate that there are no significant structural or environmental problems that cannot be remedied, that are readily apparent at this time, which leads me to a possible uses for the existing structure in lieu of demolition. It also brings up the possibility of dividing the property into two parcels, east of Beach Street and west of Beach Street, so riverfront and then west of Beach Street where the church building is. If the city is not interested in using the western portion of the property for the use imagined when it was purchased, might it be possible to solicit requests for proposal for possible community uses? This might even include selling the western parcel to a nonprofit if there was an acceptable proposal, proposed use that would be of great benefit to our citizens. I am aware of several nonprofit organizations that are interested in responding to an RFP if the city was willing to consider this option. I have proposed that 10 or more individuals might share in the purchase of the building to fend off demolition pending finding the building's ultimate use. I understand that RFP could be written in such a way that the city could consider any proposed use and development plan and decide what proposal would best meet the needs of the citizens of Ormond Beach, not necessarily the proposal that offered the highest dollar amount for the western portion of the property. Some of the uses that have been considered are as a maker space, or entrepreneur startup or incubator space, rental meeting space for large or small meetings, a child or adult daycare, part or full-time shared house of worship for religious congregations. Additionally, both our own economic developer director, Brian Rodamacher, and Tom Daley at the Small Business Development Center at Daytona State have indicated an interest in helping to develop a business plan. So, now I ask, would you consider selling or a long-term lease of the western parcel with the buildings? Only meeting that I know, let's see. Anyway, thank you for your consideration. I hope you will not vote to not demolish the building at this evening's meeting. Thank you.
I almost had to do it. All right. Dorian Burt.
Dorian Burt, 203 Pine Cone Trail. I'm standing up here and I'm listening, and, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for over 20 years. I was the Main Street Director at one time. I've been on the Ormond Beach Historical Society. I work for a man that has put his heart and soul into restoring old buildings, sick buildings, and creating or helping to create with the city's input and Main Streets, a vibrant downtown that has become a true destination. So, when this church property came up, he searched his soul. We have had several contractors, ones that are experiencing, experienced at rehabbing buildings that have suffered from, I don't want to say neglect, but have been under the gun. The building was neglected when it was a church and towards the end, when it was a working church, or when it closed and the pastor still had it. He had come to the conclusion that there is over a million, a million-five, and this is with experts that we consider experts, that we rely on, to restore or to rehab that building, and that's without having done an asbestos survey, which Weigel intends to do as is required, which adds more cost. So, with staff's report, we really support, or he does, we all do, option A. The downtown desperately needs parking. You know, an incubator to grow new businesses. I tell you, the minute I have an empty storefront, I have a new business to take that place. We just, we need the parking. The 59 spaces are the most comprehensive use for the west side of that property at this time. So, I hope that you will consider everything you've heard and move forward and choose option A. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorian. Jeremy Hopkins.
Jeremy Hopkins here to represent the team at Salty Church. It's great to be with you tonight. Salty Church is just requesting to be included in the conversation about potentially saving the church. We would like just to have a conversation, a delay of 30 to 60 days, so we can investigate a partnership with the city, the partnership with other churches about potentially restoring it back to a great church. We feel like it's a great location and worth just a little bit more due diligence to investigate a partnership to make it a church again.
Thank you, Jeremy. And Linda Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Partington, and Commissioner Kent, Selby, and Persis. Hi, Rob. So, I have a different proposition, which I sent you all an email about. Does it have to be one or the other? And one of the things I said in my letter to you is that humans are very strange creatures, and that we have learned that we have to fight to win a battle over almost any disagreement for which we have strong feelings. There's a new way of solving problems. It's called synergy, and it allows us to look at all possibilities. Of course, we all have a special interest in that property based on what we believe and want. And I believe that if we got together, if we had a month and had a number of meetings, common ground would be happy to help you with this, moderate it, and to, I believe that if we did that, we would find something that everybody, including those that want parking, including those that want it demolished, including anyone that might want to use it for something different, I think we would come up with something that is creative enough that would solve the problems of all of that. There's got to be other ways to solve the problem of parking. So, I believe that we could, even if we didn't save the building, that we could find out what we want to do with that property and what we could create there prior to letting it go. So, we're offering our services, Bill Denny and I, to take some time and all talk together to create something together. Once we talk about this together, the synergy takes hold, and everybody just, you know, it goes to another level of creativity than special interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. That's all the cards I have. Staff has presented certain options. Just need a motion and a second on an option. It doesn't have to be one of staff's. It could be something that you believe is appropriate, but we need something for discussion.
I move approval of resolution number 2021-83.
And which, which option?
Option A or one.
Number one. I don't think that's the one that staff recommended, but are you sure that's what you want?
I thought staff recommended that one. Let me look.
Staff recommended number three?
Yes. And we've got, we can, we can, we have a presentation of all three that we can put on the board if you'd like to see those three options, just to refresh your memory one more time.
Yeah, I would, whatever. I'm sorry, I just don't remember which one staff.
We did recommend number three, which was.
Okay, and that's fine. That's fine. Number three is fine.
Well, I'll second your motion for option A. Option A, to me, makes the most sense, and you started with that.
Yeah.
So, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
We keep it at A.
So, now, discussion. Commissioner Persis.
Thank you. First of all, I was born and raised here, and I've lived here all my life as, certainly that's what I mean. And I guess I'm trying to look to the future and trying to look 15, 30, 40 years from now, and I envision something dazzling, beautiful structure on Beach Street by our glistening Halifax River, something that, you know, people want to come to Ormond Beach for. I toured the church, and my husband actually also came with me, and I was hopeful. Dwight said it wasn't as bad as he thought. Well, I kind of felt the opposite. It was worse than I thought. I left the building coughing. I couldn't breathe. I don't have, I guess I have allergies. I obviously do, because something affected me, and I felt terrible for the next hour and a half after leaving the building. But I felt like it was in terrible condition. I don't see anything even worth saving in that church. I don't want to see the city put any more money than they have to into this church. I think we need to demolish it and, you know, maybe use, put some parking there for a while until we decide what we need to do with it. I just think being good stewards of the public trust, we can't afford to keep this decaying facility on one of our most beautiful streets in Ormond Beach.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the speakers and everybody that came out tonight to discuss this issue. It's always great to have public participation. And Ms. Williams, thank you for your offer. That's, I think it, something like that could be, could be very beneficial for specific things. So, I thank you for that offer. Our downtown, I agree, needs more parking desperately. And with that, I'll say, I voted to purchase the church property. I believe it was Commissioner Selby that brought it up to this elected body, and they're not making any more riverfront, waterfront property, is what it is. I feel like we got a good deal on that property, but I can tell you, as the elected representative for Zone 2, I have not had one resident come to me and ask me for a community center. Not one. Selfishly, I would like a community center. Selfishly, when I go to New Smyrna to their Brandon Center, I'm disappointed we don't have what they have. Ormond deserves what New Smyrna has, if not better. But I've not had anybody that's my boss that puts me in this chair say, "Commissioner Kent, it's top thing on my priority. I want you to find a community center." So, I just want to get that, that out there. I toured the church property last week as well. I brought my son, and Mr. Carolyn was there, and Stephen Sibley was there, Ms. Whitley was there, and it is, I'm using the exact same adjectives, and I wrote it down, Deputy Mayor Persis, terrible condition. I'm embarrassed that it's in that condition. And if former Commissioner Bohm was here, he would be really reading as the riot act about, you either take care of what you have or you tear it down, because you can't leave something in that condition. It's embarrassing, the condition. One of the only things I saw that I thought we should keep is, is a picture probably in the 1960s of some people, and I stopped and looked at it, and I made my son come over and look at it, because they were happy, and they were people, and probably not with us anymore, looking at the age of them in the picture. But the picture tells a story. And, you know, maybe we can do something with, with the pictures. As far as, you know, partnering with anybody, that word partnering, just, let me just tell you a little bit about me. That scares me a little bit. Partnering means, city, you're going to, you're going to take the brunt of this, and you're going to pay the most of this on the backs of the taxpayers in Ormond Beach. There are certain things we can partner with, with other elected bodies, or, you know, something that's a good benefit, you know, for the residents of Ormond Beach. I don't believe this is one where I want to partner. I'll tell everybody, I will sell the property for a profit to the residents of Ormond Beach. Everyone's property values has just gone crazy. Why shouldn't you, the taxpayers that purchased the property? You own it. Why shouldn't you make some money in selling the entire property? And not this nonsense of, sell the western side for 150, 200,000 dollars, and you keep the eastern side. No. I want to, if I was going to sell it, I would agree to sell it for a profit, the entire piece, and put that money back in our bank account, your bank account, and help offset your tax burden. That's, that's what I would do if I was going to sell it. I am in favor of option A, so we can add 59 parking spaces to be used by our residents to enjoy our vibrant downtown. And I'm, I'm just wondering why I wasn't beating the drum for this, but we, I feel like we should be utilizing that property now for parking. Like, why haven't we partnered with all of the businesses in the downtown and said, "Come use this parking lot now for the past three years that we've owned it and utilize it"? But anyway. For all of those, those reasons, I will be voting for option A tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Littleton.
I strongly support immediately going ahead with the demolition of the buildings on the western parcel. I have no desire to take the church, for instance, and make it a Frankenstein. As far as parking goes, I'll point you to, for option A, page 28 of our downtown master plan that we did a couple of years ago. Transportation and circulation. It says parking was clearly the most consistent topic of discussion in every meeting. Under top priorities, the number one thing was parking, public parking in the downtown district. And, to give justification. And to give justification for a northern parking parcel, quote, "Although it has been enhanced, Granada Boulevard is still considered to be a barrier for the community with harsh traffic behavior and limited safe crossings." That's justification for a northern parking lot. We already have a southern one out here. That's where I stand on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Littleton, and Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm surprised by my, some of the comments here tonight from my fellow city commissioners. I'd like to address a couple of them. First of all, Commissioner Persis, the building, I'm not surprised that you had some reaction, asthmatic type reaction to spending time in the building. Any building in Florida that goes without air, that has water intrusion, is going to create an environment that, when a human is in there, it's going to be, it's, for a lot of people, it's very unpleasant. It's really easy to fix. It's very inexpensive to fix. The first thing you do is you stop the water from coming in. And that's what the $30,000 proposal, that's part of it, is put the, is stop the intrusion of water. As far as parking goes, I agree we need more parking in downtown and I'm hopeful that staff will come forward on the riverfront piece. I mean, my recollection of the discussion was that for the Orman Yacht Club and for the downtown, the parking would be created there, much like we have at Bailey River Bridge Park, that we might continue that across, working with the Historical Society to make that entire area more conducive to. And, you know, I did some real quick numbers. We paid, was it $729,000, I think, for the property? $729,000 for the property. The appraisers indicated to us that the riverfront piece was worth $500,000. That leaves $229,000 as the capital contribution, if you will, to a 14,000 square foot building that is structurally incredibly sound. I've renovated a lot of buildings in my life and that building was built incredibly well. It's incredibly sound. That's less than $20 per square foot is our investment in that building. $20 a square foot. You can't renovate a master bedroom for $20 a square foot. A kitchen will cost you $50 to $60, I'm talking about a residential kitchen, $50 to $60 a square foot, maybe more. So our investment in that building and what it would actually take, even the numbers that Ms. Burt shared with us from Bill Jones's experts, which honestly I think are probably some of the premier folks, i.e. most expensive folks, because he does such a great job. So I think there's a, the other, so I just, to me, I hate tearing down a perfectly good building, especially when we don't know whether or not there is an alternative use. And so therefore, what I thought last, at our last meeting, the proposal that Main Street made, which was a six-month pause, was a really reasonable request. And I'm surprised at my fellow, I respect it, but I'm surprised that you're not willing to give them six months to come back. We've heard from two religious organizations tonight, which honestly, that was one of the last possible uses that I thought of for the building. And yet, two of them, two well-respected religious organizations in our community have said, "Hey, we're very interested in it. We'd like the opportunity to figure out whether or not we can make a deal on the building that's, that is acceptable to the city." And by the way, one of the things that Commissioner Kent, in response to one of your comments, that the city is going to be left on the hook, personally, I think it's entirely possible that we could, if we did an RFP or if there was strong interest, that we make the, whoever the tenant is, come up with the money to make the improvements. But it doesn't come out of the city's tax money. And also, me personally, I would not support selling the building. I don't, the reason I suggested we buy it is not because we're real estate speculators. I'm not interested in the city of Orman Beach speculating on real estate, buying things to make money. Make money one time, maybe, but probably not, and then use that to enhance our coffers. That's silly. I suggested we buy it because it's a strategically located great piece of land. And so therefore, I would, if we, if we got to the point where we are going to talk about allowing somebody to use the building for a period of time, I would only consider leasing it. I would not consider selling the western parcel, the western piece. Because in seven to 10 years, that would be plenty enough time for them to make the improvements, have time to amortize those improvements, and then the building reverts back to, it's unencumbered by the lease, and if there's a, if there is a shining, sparkling, I don't remember your exact words.
Dazzling.
Dazzling, use for, and a building that needs to be built there to replace that, then we've got 10 years to figure that out. And I think that's, I'm just, I just, I guess I'm not against, I'm not, I'm not saying that I wouldn't support demolition. What I'm saying is, let's give the community six months. We've already owned it for almost three years now, two and a half years. It's flown by. It was 2018 when we bought it. Almost three years. Let's give them six months to come back with a proposal and, you know, if we don't like it, we don't like it. They have a high bar. They understand how high the bar is. They've got three nos, right, or three yeses to demo right here. So I think they understand the pressure that's on them. Let's do that. Let's give them the opportunity to show us a plan that we like, that we like enough to give, you know, to do something other than just tearing the building down. And also, the last comment I want to make is that, you know, we don't know the rules yet. We don't know what Treasury is going to tell us about the, this American Relief Plan money, but, you know, we're supposed to get $18 million there. We put $3 million into the Revenue Replacement Fund, I think we called it, which was additional reserves. We spent, I think, 100 grand of that money last year. We got the million and a half that, you know, from the early COVID response thing that paid payroll, that we had already paid. We didn't even need that money. So we, while I don't want to overstate the case here, I think we're going to have a lot of, we're going to have a lot of cash and we're going to need to be thinking about how to invest these dollars. This may be the perfect opportunity to do it. And then we just tore it down. We don't even know how we can spend that 18 million yet. So again, I think prudence, prudence tells me, give it some time. Let it air. It's like a fine bottle of wine. Open it up, let it air a little bit, and then enjoy it and see whether or not, as Linda Williams says, that the synergy can come together and that as a community, we can actually make something that nobody even imagined and we'll all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I agree with much of what you said, Commissioner Selby, and of course, I defer frequently to your real estate experience. And I do respect the other commissioners' positions as well. It's not an easy decision, but I believe it's not a decision that should be rushed. And primarily, out of respect for Main Street and our volunteers that do so much for the city, they have a design committee that's knowledgeable and believes that there's possibilities with this building. I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm willing to, I'm not in a rush, I guess you'd say. It's been two and a half years. What, six more months or two more months or whatever the situation is? So, you know, I can see we're outvoted. It looks like it's three to two, but out of respect for Main Street, out of respect for the salty congregation that has done so much in the community, did a beautiful job with the old firehouse, taken that over, I believe keeping it on the register of historic places, and out of respect for Benai Torah, that's a longtime congregation, wonderful congregation in our community, at least giving them the opportunity to have their thoughts and ideas fully aired. We could come to the end of all that and decide there's just nothing that'll work, but, you know, between Linda Williams and Bill Denny, being willing to work with all those people, there's hope and there's a possibility. And I think with so many people interested in working on it, looking at it, and trying to come up with something that doesn't involve basically paying $700,000 for a parking lot, I think it's worth taking a look at. So that's where I'm at, and unless anybody has anything else, we can call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
No. And now we are on reports, suggestions, and requests, and we'll start with our city manager,
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, want to review with you some upcoming meetings. We have our CIP draft budget workshop on July 6th. Now that, remember, that's kind of out of sync for us. So that's July 6th at 5:30, and I will meet in the commission chambers and Emil will be provided. We have our operational budget on July 20th, and then you have your regular meeting for July on that same date. And at that point in time, you tentatively, you set your tentative millage. Parks and Rec Master Plan workshops will be August 17th at 5:30 and January 18th at As you know, that Parks and Rec Master Plan has been ongoing. They have been conducting a statistically valid survey. Their electronic version of the survey was open to April 15th, and so far, we've received over 400 responses. Both the telephone survey and the surveys compiled by people who have filled out online will be done over the next three months. The Master Plan Committee is promoting the survey, so we want to get as much feedback and participation as possible. Update on CIP projects, the McDonald House, the contractor continues to work on the McDonald House and is progressing well on the east wall currently. And that portion should be done by the end of June, and then we'll move forward with the second half, which is the north? Okay. I have my directions all mixed up in my head.
After I gave you your report earlier this morning, I spoke to Mike Weigl, the contractor. They're even progressing better than we thought they would. We took a look at that original work authorization that we did for the two sides. They have enough money left over that they think that they can do the south portion, the south elevation. Out of that, already allocated $450,000. I think it's about $90,000 left. We got $60,000 worth of work to do. So we're going to do the south side next, and then we're going to come back to you with hopefully a proposal to do the north side to finish it off and all part of the original project.
Yeah, if you recall, that was a two-part project. You were going to do one part first. It was roughly $800,000 grant, so.
Excuse me, can I comment on that just while we're on that? Okay, so when I met with the Historical Society, one of their goals is to put an elevator tower on the south side of the building. Might it not be smarter to do the north side, which is not going to be changed or not potentially changed?
Our main goal of this portion of the project was to make it watertight. There's some serious deficiencies on that south side, so in, you know, looking at the fact that we can do it for about $60,000, I don't think there will be much of that that we throw away. And so I think that to benefit the project, we, we'll take a good, hard look at it with that knowledge. The architect for the Historical Society, Dana Smith, has spoken to Weigl up to this point. They've kind of coordinated a little bit, knowing what's going on. So we'll try and coordinate to make sure that we don't do anything that's throwaway and they can benefit the Historical Society with their ultimate goal.
Our manhole repair and lining project is currently underway. As part of the project, the contractor cleans the manholes, makes all necessary repairs to the manhole structure, and finishes by spraying the inside with an epoxy liner to help prevent infiltration. Our contractor will repair 18 manholes, of which about one-third of the way through, and he is addressing manholes on Airport Business Park last week and is doing overnight work to repair a manhole on West Granada. If you were traveling West Granada towards the Clyde Morris intersection, you noted a slight dip, and that's the one he's working on now. You heard us talk about the FDOT contract for adaptive signalization on Granada. That contractor has completed the installation of the components of the devices and the controls necessary for the adaptive signalization project. The project coordinates signals between A1A and Timber Creek. The current, the system is currently in what they call collection mode. It's set in there to see, to learn how the traffic is functioning. During this period, data is collected to establish baseline conditions, which from modifications are calculated and implemented. The system is set to be in this mode for 30 days, and by the end of May, we should be into the adaptive mode. So hopefully by then, you'll start to see those small improvements where you're not waiting at a red light when there's no cross traffic and things like that. So we're excited for that project. We are, I think, ahead of Dunlaught, and they were doing that adaptive signalization project there with the help of Miriam Giabi. We got that funded. It took a while to get it funded, but they did design and construction at the same time. So we're really excited about that project. You recall the project on Florence Street behind the Julian's property? That was to make some additional public parking spaces there, and I think, did we do two ways there or just one? We did a one-way through there. So that is underway and currently should be done quickly. Another project that we've been working on for quite some time, actually, I think since Hurricane Michael, was Nova Road. During the hurricane, hurricane, no, it was Matthew. When we had the hurricane, it just so happened, like, three weeks later, FDOT was scheduled to have a public meeting on some designs of that Nova Road from Granada to Wilmette. And we didn't have much participation, no surprise, because we were in a total disaster at that point. But we have been working with Jim Strohs at FDOT, and they have some preliminary designs on that roadway. I'd like to have a workshop with you all on that matter, so you can see what's proposed to happen there. One of the important things would be signalization. You know that curve, when you come out of Publix is a bad curve? We've had several accidents there. They're thinking about signalizing that, that would coordinate with Old Kings Road, maybe narrowing the roadway to slow it down somewhat. So we'd like to talk with you about those ideas so that you can see what's going on and see which direction you would like to go in on that. So we'll set something up. I don't think we'll be ready by your next meeting, but maybe sometime in the early summer. So that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Joyce?
Yes, I have one question.
Commissioner Selby.
In light of the governor's pronouncement the other night about the emergency, executive emergency orders, where does the city's order stand?
Well, we haven't really officially had any orders. We had a voluntary mask ordinance. Our Parks and Rec plans are to do summer camp like they did last year and to expand those. We're having our first really official event will be Memorial Day celebration, and then we'll have the Fourth of July fireworks, and there was one other one. What's the last one? Memorial Day, and of course, the Christmas parade. We're planning on those. The Performing Arts Center is perhaps the slowest to come around, but that has more to do with the performers and getting shows booked than it does any kind of regulation on our part. So we do offer masks if people come into the building, but they're not required to wear those.
And what's the, what's your policy with city staff? Are they required to wear masks?
No, they're not required to wear masks.
Okay, so people are just doing that just?
Yes.
Just because they're used to it or they?
Right.
They feel comfortable? Okay, thank you.
Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Thank you. No additional comments tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Claire. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing this evening.
And tonight, we start with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I really, I really don't have any comment, other than I'm just, I'm just, I'm disappointed. I just think the, I think tearing down a perfectly good building, rushing into it, in my opinion, I consider it a rush, because there's no particular, there's no compelling reason to do it. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Our holding costs are virtually nothing, costs us virtually nothing to hold it, and we deprive local citizens of the opportunity to come forward with a really great plan, or potentially a really great plan. And so if we waited six months, gave them the opportunity to do that, what would be different? It'd be six months later, and that's it. Nothing else would be different. But when we tear it down, there is no, there, there is no, there is no alternative. We eliminate all of those opportunities. So, I'm just, I'll just leave with that. And I, I do respect your, I respect your opinions, I want everybody to know that, I'm not condemning that, but I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Commissioner Kent.
If you have not been to our Atlantic Ocean Beach, in Orman Beach lately, do yourself a favor and go. My son and I have been walking every afternoon after work and school, and he said to me today, about four hours ago, "Dad, I really don't think there's a more beautiful place that I could ever choose to live." And I told him that I completely agreed, but I still need to take him to Maui, so he can just see it. And experience it. And he, he said he would take me up on that offer and let me take him. But I'm amazed sometimes at how I can take just advantage, and for granted, where we live. I mean, I, I sit in this chair and I look out, you know, it's getting pretty dark now, but that'll put a smile on my face every time I look out over that river. And walking on that beach has been healthy and beneficial, and it's been windy, so, you know, you all know I like to fish, so, you know, that, that hasn't been able to happen. But it's been, it's been enjoyable. So I just say tonight, Orman Beach, those that are here and those that are listening online, if you've not done it in a while, go do it, it's pretty fantastic. Have a nice evening.
Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to remind everyone, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and if you have any special teachers that you know out there, make sure you thank them, or give them a card, or just, you know, give them a pat on the back, because they do work so hard. And this year has been especially difficult with COVID, and all the precautions that they have had to go through with their students and with themselves. So, I just know, being a former educator, a teacher, assistant principal, and principal, this is a very, very special week for those people. Also, this is also National Police Week, and I just want the chief to know that I'm very excited about the Orman Beach Police Department banquet Thursday. Unfortunately, months ago, I made an engagement, and I'm not going to be able to come, and I am so deeply disappointed that I can't be there, because you know how I, how supportive I am of, of all of you and your police departments. So, would you please tell everyone that night that I'm thinking of them, and I'm so sorry, I'm, I'm not going to be able to be there. With that, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. People probably know that the AMC on Williamson has closed down. It's a sad casualty of the pandemic and the response thereof. I have plenty of happy memories there, I'm sure everyone else did, it was a lot of first jo, first job for a lot of people in Orman Beach. I do want staff and us up here to be looking at it, because obviously, it's, AMC actually holds the property, so they went from a entertainment company to basically a real estate holding company, with the way the pandemic went out. And I suspect they'll be selling the property, and, you know, there's no light there, so any use that generates traffic, as opposed to what the movie theater did, and the times that it did, might be some concern of us in the future. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Littleton. And Commissioner Selby, I think you brought up the stimulus funding that we're going to be receiving from the federal government. $18.3 million coming to the city of Orman Beach, and right now, we still do not have any guidance, other than very, very broad strokes as to how that can be spent. It's going to be dispersed to the state on the 11th. They're required to disperse it to us within 30 days, I believe, unlike the FEMA money with hurricane reimbursement, that takes years and years to get reimbursed for. And so they disperse it, 9.15 million, that's coming first, and then after two years, an additional 9.15 million, and it all has to be spent within four years. So, we have some decision-making to do as a body, as far as what the priorities are going to be, how we're going to spend that money. I've told the city manager, I want people to look back in 20 years at this commission and say, they did a really good job with that, with those dollars, those taxpayers' dollars. So I think, you know, initially, maybe we need a workshop to come up with some overriding principles for, you know, one, it should, it should stimulate the economy, it's stimulus money. Two, if we're allowed to take care of our employees, we should be able to take care of our employees, figure out exactly what we're going to spend 18.3 million dollars on. It's such an unusual position for a government to be in, to have dollars like that. Generally, we're always looking for where, where is the revenue going to come from, and there's precious few sources. So, that's something that is going to be taking up a lot of our time over the next several months, I believe, and it's going to put some burden on staff. You know, some of those dollars may have to be spent on additional staff to manage the projects that we decide to do. But in a way, it's an opportunity. There's going to be an inspector general's office, I'm sure, and if you don't spend it in the ways that they decide that it's proper to spend it, just like with the FEMA dollars, they will come back 10 years later and say, you owe us $18 million. And none of the people that are here now will be here then, and it'll just be a nightmare, just like it is with the FEMA dollars for a lot of cities. So, that's something to keep in mind. As far as the Volusia County Library here in Orman Beach, some of the people apparently misunderstood my comments last week. Volusia County Library's lease is coming to an end, and some of the word on the street is that they're not going to renew. That's not something that Orman Beach has a say in, it's not the Orman Beach Library, it's the Volusia County Public Library in Orman Beach. So if the county doesn't renew, we don't really have a say in that matter. So, I want to make that clear. When you're writing to me, saying, don't close the library, other than arguing that to the county, that's not my decision to make. So, these are the rumblings that I'm hearing, I'm, I'm glad people are responding to it, because I want the word to get out there, so we can deal with it. But that's, that's my clarification on that. And then the submerged parcel out here of land, a lot of people don't understand exactly what that is, I'm not sure I know exactly what it is, is either, but I'm glad that I brought it up at the last meeting, so that we could at least consider what the options might be for that, because I didn't want to get five years out, or 10 years out, and have people looking at how Casson Park is functioning and say, gosh, if we had just done this, it could have worked so much better. And so, I wasn't, and I think I made that clear at the last meeting, advocating one thing or another, but I at least wanted to consider it and have a full discussion on it, so that down the road, we don't regret having not even considering, considered it. We can consider it and say, nope, that's a bad decision, it doesn't make any sense, but I didn't want to let that opportunity to at least look at it go by. And so, that's why I brought it up, and I'm happy to continue looking at it, if somebody were to present something that, that made sense and could work over there. So, and again, I think I said last meeting too, the price would have to be right. Some of the numbers I've heard are way high, but either way, you know, I think legal has opined that there's nothing legal that can be done over there, and the property's essentially worthless. The city manager's office has indicated that they don't think there's any interest, and that's great, I mean, that's the kind of feedback we want, but I at least want the public to be aware that when people bring things to us, we consider them, we don't just say, oh, no thanks, that'll be the end of it, and, and leave it at that. So, with all that, we'll say goodnight.